Oh, yeah, that's pretty easy, huh? You'll go first?
We do have more seats up front, folks, so don't be shy.
Yeah.
Well. Sorry.
Yeah.
Hitting my brother.
Okay.
Right now?
Yep.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sky Stanton, and I want to welcome you to the Goshen City Council meeting today, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you all for helping make Goshen a great place to live, learn, and have fun. Now let's all stand together to say the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, great job. Thank you so much, Sky. I'm gonna rat her out a little bit. When I asked her to hit the gavel really loud, I was looking for the perfect metaphor, and she said, "Do it like I'm hitting my brother." She did a great job. Thank you, Sky, and to your family for bringing you here tonight. It means so much to have kids lead these important openings to these meetings where we're deciding the future of Goshen, because the future is really about you. So you're welcome to stay and listen to this entire meeting, or you can go home and eat dinner. So I'm sure a lot of the people here will be a little bit envious that you just had a short part of today's session, but you're free to go at any time. So thank you again for being here tonight. One more round of applause for Sky, please. Okay, with the Clerk Treasurer, please call the roll.
Councillor Gerber.
Here.
Councillor Ledrock.
Here.
Councillor Nisley.
Here.
Councillor Peel.
Here.
Councillor Redzik.
Regsicker.
Here.
Councillor Schrock.
Here.
Councillor President Weddle.
Here.
Youth Advisor Reyes.
And the first item on our agenda for tonight is the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-third, twenty-eighth, and twenty- August twenty-fifth regular meetings. Questions, comments, or a motion from any of the councillors?
Second.
We have a motion from Nisley and a second from Peel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Questions, comments, or a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Peel and a second from Nisley. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously as well. That brings us to privilege of the floor. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the council with anything that is not on tonight's agenda? So if you are here to speak to the council on anything that's not related to either the library budget or the city budget, you're welcome to speak. Otherwise, well, there will be an opportunity to speak about other things related to those departmental budgets or program budgets. Chaplain?
Yes. Please, please sign in. I just did. You already did? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lipton, and council members for allowing me to present our service, the chaplain service, to the Goshen community and to you tonight. I know I have just a couple of minutes, so I have put everything in envelopes that I would appreciate for you to look at.
Could you also state your name again?
Sorry, Greg Lanson. I am the lead chaplain for the Goshen Police and Fire Department. I actually the lead chaplain, also the founder and lead chaplain of First In Chaplain Crisis Response Team. In that packet, you will find my card. You'll find a brochure that explains what we do for the city of Goshen. You'll find a couple of brochures we give to fire victims and police situation victims, death scenes primarily. And then you will also see an estimated cost thing for this year. I realize that you're gonna be talking budget things later. I'm here just to talk a little bit about the part of the budget that belongs to, or that has been appropriated, I should say, for us. Just a little bit of background real quick. I became Goshen Fire Department's chaplain in two thousand and six with another gentleman, Jim Schrock, who has since passed away. In two thousand and twelve, we were asked to assume the chaplaincy of the Goshen Police Department as well. We've been doing that ever since. Over the years, as the city has grown and the responsibilities have grown, we have added to the team, like I said, Jim Schrock, my partner, passed away. But I've added four other persons. There are now five of us on the team that serve the city of Goshen. We are all credentialed chaplains through the International Conference of Police Chaplains, the Federation of Fire Chaplains, Police Chaplain One is out of Destin, Florida. The Fire Chaplain One was out of Dallas, Texas. The International Critical Incident Stress Foundation, the Federal Emergency Management Association, and also the Department of Homeland Security were all certified through those organizations. What do we do? Real quick. We do victim assistance at fires and at death calls. When Goshen Fire or Police have a death call, they call us to come in and help the families. If there's a working fire in Goshen, we come in and help the victims, find them temporary housing, food, clothing, things of that nature. If it's a death call, we just help them through that process for the first twenty-four hours or so. Our service is short-term, twenty-four hours, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, is about the limit of our service. Once the Red Cross gets involved with fire scenes, they take it from there. We're kind of the gap filler between them, between the fire and the Red Cross. That's what we do for victims. We also do rehabilitation for the fire department and the police department. If they're on a long-term scene, fire, SWAT call-out, whatever, we do rehab. We provide the rehabilitation for them, the things that they need for that, drinks, food, things of that nature. So we're there for that. We also work with the stress management for them. We do counseling. We do sharing. We do teaching. We just help out peer support. We help out with their stress problems. We do ride-along station visits. We help their spouses. This year, we've done three things for, three events for spouses of police officers and firefighters to help them with the various stresses that come with being a spouse of a firefighter or a police officer. We also serve and support retirees. We've assisted with three funerals, firefighter funerals this year, two of them retirees. One was a line-of-duty death for another community, but they asked us to help because they didn't have chaplains. And then we represent Goshen Fire Department and Goshen Police Department at some community functions that were requested to do that. So far this year, we've been called out over fifty times. Sixteen of those were actually working fires. Thirteen of them were death calls. Three funerals, I already mentioned that. We've done five memorial services, and we've done three family support things. So that's pretty much what we do. And in the past, Goshen Fire and Goshen Police helped cover our expenses, and that became difficult a few years ago because they were using their training funds, the way I understand it. And so training funds that were spent to help us weren't available to help police officers and firefighters. So a year or so ago, be a little over a year ago now, with Mayor Lipton's help and the chiefs, we decided to move that support to a different area of the budget, which you guys know better than I do. And so we're just here to, I'm just here to tell you what we do. So you understand, as you work with the budget this year, you kind of got an idea. When you see that First In Chaplain Crisis Response Team there, you know what you're talking about. All right, good enough?
Thank you, chaplain. You're living up to the First In name, for sure. Now, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the council with anything that is not on to tonight's agenda? Now, if you are here to speak about a program or project that is related to the budget, please wait. We'll do that after we get through the library budget. There will be another time. If you are here representing a project or a program that is funded through the budget, that would be up for discussion. There will be a time later in tonight's discussion for you to present that. But this would, what I'm asking for with privilege of the floor at this time is something that's not related at all to budget discussions and not related at all to the library budget discussion. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pat Huff. I live on Wildon Street, and I'm not sure I'm at the right place to speak this. But we have an issue on Wildon with the check speeding, check thing. There are, after, it's usually after dark, closer to around, between nine and ten. There are people that go down to the other side of fifteen, and they wait on that light to turn green, and then they go as fast as they can go to see how fast they're going by the time they get to that speed, to check their speed. And one of these days, somebody's gonna die.
Do you have a rough idea of the timing of that?
Between, usually it's between nine and eleven.
Nine PM and eleven?
Yeah. And it's usually on Friday and Saturday nights.
So I do have a person that's actually standing right behind you who can assist you. So I'm gonna direct you.
I didn't know who did, I didn't know who.
You're in the right place to get help, or you can always.
There's so many little kids out there, and they, yes, they're not supposed to be out at that time, but you know how kids are.
I totally understand and empathize, and it's definitely something GPD will want to address.
Okay.
So you can always call the mayor's office if there are concerns about that, or you can call GPD.
Okay.
And they, you know, any call.
Because usually by the time, you know, by the time we would call the police department, they're gone.
Yes.
You know.
But I'm gonna direct you to Chief Adams, who's standing right at the back.
Yeah, please write your name.
If you could.
Print it for them.
And he can take more information and provide you with some guidance on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Excuse me. Anybody else? Welcome, Mr.
My name is Norm Kaufman. Yeah, I signed in earlier.
Okay.
Tonight, we will hear how SE One negatively impacts city budgets, cuts in services, loss of jobs, and increased fees on both. At one of the last city council meetings, Council President Weddle indicated that we need to make sure that all local legislatures understand the difficulty SE One is causing libraries, schools, counties, and the city of Goshen. He went on to suggest that prior to the January twenty-sixth legislative session, we should invite Joanna King, Blake Dorian, and others to attend a meeting. We would share, where we could share our concerns and hear the response. I'm here to urge that this be done. I've known Joanna King for many years. I've known her to be a deeply community-oriented person and who was a close team member of mine in finishing the pumpkin vine trail into Shipshewana. I needed her, and she needed me. I had information that she did not have, and she had information that I did not have. We came together with others and overcame challenges that seemed insurmountable. Key to all this was listening, hearing each other out, and then deciding how, as a team, we could work together to solve the challenges that faced us. Honest dialogue does not mean, just mean, making, does not just mean making sure my point of view is the only one that counts. We must be willing to change our minds when data indicates otherwise. I would urge that we invite her to come to present her perspective, and that if she has data that we have not heard before, we acknowledge it and see what it might mean to change our plans. We ask that she come with the same commitment. After a serious exchange of views, we urge her to work with members of the city to form a team that helps alter SE One that will benefit all parties impacted. If she and Blake Kuhem do not know, refuse our invitation. I urge you to still hold a town hall meeting for the public so we can better understand the actual impact and how it might take the next steps to change, make changes downstate. I am not naive. Changing opinions is hard, but I would like Joanna and all of us to listen to each other and perhaps rediscover that we hold common core values and a common love for our community. I encourage Mayor Lipton and Council Well to work together to provide a forum for this important discussion prior to the January legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that wishes to speak to the council? Okay. This would be any topic not related to budget or the library budget. If it's related to the budget or the library budget, we'll wait until later. What, so if that's the case, why don't we wait to have your presentation until later?
Okay, Jeffrey Landis, six-six-four-six-seven, State Road fifteen. I signed in. I'm one, I live one mile south of the city. I'm not in the city limits, so I'll make this very short. I'm chairing a community task force that is working to plan the town hall that Norm mentioned with Senator Doreo and Representative King. The purpose of this group is to have our elected officials explain to us all why they voted for SB One and how they can help get the bill amended so it's not detrimental to the city of Goshen. This is not a partisan problem. We want to work together with the mayor and the city council to get a good resolution for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. Appreciate you being here. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll conclude privilege of the floor and move on to our first action item on our agenda. With the council president, please introduce the first action item on our agenda.
Do you want to do the public hearing first?
Yes.
You could introduce it still, and then.
However you want to do it, okay. With the Clerk Treasurer, please read Ordinance five-two-three-three by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two thirty-three, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for a stream for the proposed twenty-twenty-six Goshen Public Library Budgets.
I move for the passive ordinance fifty-two thirty-three on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Nisley. We'll officially open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item before we begin our presentation tonight? Okay, seeing no one will conclude the public hearing portion and move on to our presentation from the Goshen Public Library Director. Or your representative, and/or both. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lipton and members of the city council. My name is Lisa Huntington. I'm with Baker Tilly. We serve as municipal advisors to the library. We are here this evening because pursuant to Indiana Code, public libraries with appointed boards may adopt their own budgets, provided that the advertised budget does not exceed the annual growth quotient, which for budget year two thousand and twenty-six is capped at four percent. The library's proposed two thousand and twenty-six budget exceeds this growth quotient due to an increase in debt service obligations related to the two thousand and twenty-four general obligation bonds. As a result, the library is subject to binding review and budget adoption by the appropriate fiscal body. As a designated fiscal body for the library, we respectfully request your review and approval of the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Please note that your approval does not in any way obligate the city to pay any of the debt of the library. You are simply approving the budget and the appropriation. We appreciate your consideration. Do you have any questions that we can help answer this evening?
I don't believe so.
How much above the four percent?
I don't have the percentage. The debt service itself has, has increased by about a little over seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, any questions, discussion items? Are you prepared to move forward with a vote on first reading?
We are.
Okay. We'll go ahead. You are welcome to have a seat. Doesn't look like they're gonna ask very many questions of you this evening. Well, before we move to a vote, are there any additional questions or comments from anybody in the audience after hearing the presentation? Okay, council, we'll move back to you for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously on first reading. We will have our second reading at the next council meeting.
No, I'm sorry. It's October twenty-seventh.
Thank you for that clarification. Twenty-seventh or second? Richard? Could you say the date one more time?
October twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Okay. All right, that brings us to the next action item on our agenda, which everybody is very excited about tonight. With the council president, please introduce item five-two-three-four.
With the Clerk Treasurer, please read Ordinance fifty-two thirty-four by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two thirty-four, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. First reading for the proposed two thousand and twenty-six city of Goshen budget.
I move for the passive ordinance fifty-two thirty-four on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from, a motion from Weddle and the second from Ledrock. At this time, I will open up the general, the hearing. If you have general comments about the budget, you're welcome at this time. Otherwise, you, there will be another opportunity after you've heard discussion on each of the fund items, if you wish to add additional comments before we move to the final vote. So is there anyone who just has, not specific to your program, but just general comments or questions about the budget before we move into the presentations? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will move into our presentation. So kicking off our presentation tonight will be Amber Nielsen from Baker Tilly is going to walk us through an overview of the budgeting process. Welcome.
Hello. Do I have a clicker? Or are you gonna, got it. Michael's the clicker. Good evening, everyone. It is good to see you all again. So on the screen and in front of you, hopefully, you have kind of our annual financial data that we prepare in regards to the two thousand and twenty-six budget, the overview, and what are the numbers telling us essentially. So first slide, our agenda. And this is, this is all similar information as you have seen in years past. Just that way, you know, I like the familiar information. I know there are definitely some unique, uniqueness to the budget for, you know, due to Senate Enrolled Act One that'll occur in two thousand and twenty-six. But the setup of this and kind of how you're seeing the information hopefully is all very familiar to you. So our agenda, we're gonna go over our operating funds, historical financial information, the two thousand and twenty-six budget, and then we'll end a little bit on beyond the twenty-six budget. So remind you, because it's been a year, when we mentioned the big four-plus funds in this presentation, we are referring to the General Fund Motor Vehicle Highway, which receives gas tax, and that includes both the unrestricted portions and the restricted portions to paving, parks, and public safety lit. So half of the charts you see in here, again, are only for these big four-plus funds because those are the major operating funds. When we talk about the city's budget, the majority of your budget exists in these five funds. So you can see the bullets there. For example, ninety-two percent of the city's payroll flows through these funds. You've got sixteen departments in the General Fund. The majority is flowing through these. So the financial health of these funds are really a true focus point that we need to hone in on, and that's why we do it every year. Of these funds, the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-six is just over forty million. So they are major funds with a major piece of the twenty-six budget. Next slide. So now we're gonna jump into, of course, before you prepare a budget, that's for a city, a teeny-tiny town, or even our own, you know, checkbooks at home, you have to look at where have you been, of course. So the next section with the next few slides and graphs really show you historically, and hopefully these look familiar to you from years in the past. So they'll go back about a decade from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four. So we'll back up one slide. All right, thank you. So the first graph here, again, those are for those big four-plus funds. The gray is the ending cash balance in total for those funds. The yellow is the revenues, those funds generated and received in that given year. And then the teal are the expenditures. So I'm gonna focus in on the last two years, twenty-three and twenty-four, since twenty-four would have been a year we added on to this chart. Obviously, the chart is telling us consistently, year over year, over the past decade, while the city's revenues have increased, so have expenditures, and so have fund balances, right? It takes a lot more for the city to operate as the city as it does now and in two thousand and twenty-six as well than it did in two thousand and fifteen. So just some highlights of what happened between twenty-three and twenty-four. Revenues did increase, and that was good. That was things of local income tax, property tax, that obviously grows by that four percent, that grew by that four percent in two thousand and twenty-four, and that's the maximum. Um, that grew by that four percent in twenty-twenty-four, and that's the maximum levy growth quotient. Things like interest income, all of that grew. Um, but your expenses also grew as well. Those went up ten percent from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, and that's actual spending. So again, that highlights, you know, comparing these numbers to twenty-fifteen, every year the cities, uh, and these are mainly operational. I mean, we've got some paving in these funds, but when you're talking about general MBH parks and public safety lit, these are all funds that are paying for supplies, for contracts, for wages. And so just from twenty-three to twenty-four, those expenses for those funds did go up ten percent. Um, however, even though those did go up, there was an increase, if you look at the gray bars, an increase in fund balance. And that's simply because in that, those, actually, both of those given years, revenues did exceed expenditures, which results in a positive cash flow for these funds. The next slide is telling you the same information. We're just adding on top of all of the rest of the budgeted funds, um, to these charts. So again, between twenty-three and twenty-four, and, and the red are those big four plus funds we just saw on the last slide, and then the teal are all of the other budgeted funds. Now, we say select budget funds. We left out like ARPA, because those are not operational funds that, you know, they would skew this data. So we left out those big one-off funds, bond proceeds, things like that, um, just so the data isn't, uh, skewed. And you're getting a good view of more operational and those true, uh, capital projects that are being funded out of TIF, things like Edit, things like that. And so these funds do include TIF, um, which is why, uh, you will see a much higher cash balance, much higher revenue and much higher expenditures in these. But you, you see a pretty much the same trend, a little bit higher revenues, um, higher cash balance. Um, expenses actually did go down in these funds in totality. However, that is mostly due to project delays. Like I said, these, these numbers do include TIF funds. So if, uh, you know, a, a TIF had a project that was delayed, um, it, the, the expenses could have gone down. Or if there was a, a project in twenty-twenty-three, um, a big project that, of, of course, didn't happen in twenty-four. Next slide. So if you remember, um, these slides and what they tell us, um, these are basically in the teal. These are the ending fund balances of those funds. So this is over the same period, um, compared to a fifty percent reserve and a fifteen percent reserve. So fifty percent is kind of what we would recommend is a target. Um, we wouldn't want to see the city go any below that fifty percent. And what really that is, is let's say all revenues for the city stop tomorrow. It means you've got one year or half fifty percent of the annual operating budget for these funds sitting in the bank. So you could continue if all revenue stopped for half a year. Why we suggest fifty percent is because us, for all of these funds, except for public safety lit, your major revenue is property tax and you're getting that only twice a year in June and December. So technically, you would want to be able to continue operating in those funds seamlessly until the next property tax distribution. A fifteen percent is like when you're getting close to that fifteen percent, and that's more of a two-month reserve. Um, that, that should be where the alarm bells are ringing. So you can see over the past decade, you know, the first few years on the chart, the city was below that fifty percent. Um, a little bit closer to that fifteen percent in twenty-fifteen. Over the course of the year, um, it has increased the percentage to ending twenty-twenty-four, um, to about ninety percent. You can see there was a stall in that during the COVID years. Um, but as the mayor addressed in her letter, um, you know, th- there were for the, the, um, budgets, there were kind of more excess fund balances, which this kind of would tell us for those years. Um, however, increases in supplemental lit, interest income, like I said, project timing, um, and then spending conservatively, conservatively below your budget has attributed to an increasing cash or fund balance for these funds. The next slide tells you the same thing, but for all of those funds in totality again. I, again, these do include your, your large capital funds such as TIF, which is why you would see that, um, hot, very high, um, uh, percentage, one-hundred-and-seventy-four percent. Um, but as you can see on the coming slides, this goes through twenty-four. TIF, for example, had a huge capital project in twenty-five, and we would likely see that number go down, which you'll see that in a few slides. The next slide, this is just informational, um, historical certified net assessed value for the city. It has increased pretty steadily over the last few years from twenty-four to twenty-five. It did increase four-point-five percent. We like to see that increasing because it, because it does help keep tax rates down. Um, as of this afternoon, Elkhart County had not, has still not released twenty-twenty-six values. So I don't have that information for you tonight, whereas normally I would. Um, but we would hope to see that increasing again, but things of, are a little bit unknown on what that would truly look like just due to Senate Enrolled Act One and how that is going to affect the assessed values. The next slide, there is a lot of numbers on here. This is again, going back a whole decade, giving you that raw data of what was the gross tax levy that you see in column A for the city. The circuit breaker credits that you see in column B. And again, those are credits, um, enacted in two thousand and eight that are given back to the homeowners. So for a residential taxpayer, they cannot pay more than one percent of their homes' assessed value. Um, it gives you the percentage of how much is the city losing to circuit breaker credit compared to that levy? Your net levy, which is what the city's actually receiving. Um, and there's some net change columns, and then we've got net assessed value in the C, and then the tax rate calculation. So you can see just kind of looking at these numbers. And we add on a, a year, every year when we do this presentation. So for twenty-twenty-five, a few things happened. Um, circuit breaker did increase by about a million dollars. I know the mayor addresses this in her, her letter as well. Um, couple of things cause that. Um, for example, we all know when an overlapping unit issues debt or, or raises its tax rate for other reasons. Um, when you raise the tax rates, especially a tax rate such as debt, which is exempt from circuit breaker, it raises the circuit breaker in that district, and then that circuit breaker has to be shared amongst all of those units. Um, X, if a overlapping unit did an excess levy appeal because they were growing faster than the state, that raise could raise circuit breaker. Um, the other thing that is unique to counties with PTRC, Property Tax Replacement Credit, is when, so PTRC is applied to the tax bills before circuit breaker, um, to, to help offset that circuit breaker, and that's a, a local income tax. So the rate hasn't changed by the county. However, the allocation of that PTRC and how it's applied is, um, it's something the county works with the DLGF every year to change those allocations. So before this meeting, I, I pulled the tax bill of, of a resident in Goshen, and that PTRC, basically what is offsetting circuit breaker, did go down between last year and this year. So a couple of different things here. Um, in general, it's just a larger pool of circuit breaker due to a couple of different factors. And it's, it's something the PTRC can't keep up with or offset, if that makes sense. Um, I will say though, that I work with many units in the county and, and many units in the county saw increases in circuit breaker in twenty-twenty-five. Um, unfortunately, as I'm standing here to you now, I can't tell you exactly what twenty-six will be, because we don't know what twenty-six will be until tax bills are sent. So we will know that number in twenty-twenty-six. Um, in May, it's, it's May of twenty-six, April or May. Um, you can see a few years ago, if you look at twenty-one and, sorry, I have a glare on my iPad, so I'm, I'm leaning. Um, twenty-one and twenty-two, there was also, um, an increase in circuit breaker likely due to all of the same reasons. Uh, PTRC changes and/or overlapping unit, um, activity. Um, and then you can, so it went from two-point-six to three-point-seven, so about the pretty much same increase, uh, a few years ago. But then it, it came down over time as those net assess values kind of catch up to those tax rates, right? Because net assess value, increasing net assess value keeps tax rates lower, which then helped to lower circuit breaker. It has started to level out and come down a little bit. Um, with Senate Enrolled Act One, though, that's not something we would, uh, expect to see. Is circuit breaker coming down? We will expect it to be increasing with, uh, all of the legislative issues as well. You look like you have a question. You do? Okay, you're thinking of a question. I'll be ready when you're ready. Next slide. Um, this basically covers everything that I just said. Um, you know, what circuit breaker credits were, what they increased, they, the number is right there. They did increase thirty-six percent from twenty-twenty-four. And since the enactment, sorry, it was, it was adopted in two thousand and eight, circuit breaker credit started in twenty-ten. The city has lost essentially fifty, almost fifty-three million, um, of property tax revenue. So if that legislation never would have passed in two thousand and eight, um, the city would have captured that fifty-three million, uh, over that period of time. All right, so moving on to the twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, I just want to give kudos to the mayor and, and all of the department heads. I worked alongside them as they prepared this year's budget. And as I said in the beginning of the presentation, it, it definitely a unique budget year. And all of you really did a very, uh, great job and put in a lot of hours. I mean, a ton of hours, so just want to give kudos to them. Um, the overview, though, as we had mentioned, um, the city develops a proposed budget. Uh, I know everyone worked super hard to closely match, uh, available revenues with costs. And I think in a lot of areas, um, the, the city achieved that, uh, to the best that I've seen it personally in, in many years, adopting or proposing a, a balanced budget more. Um, and that came with a ton of challenges just due to twenty-twenty-six being the first year of those, um, Senate Enrolled Act One impacts. We will, of course, as you all know, see those, uh, increasing over the next five, six years. And, you know, depending on what happens in the, in the spring, um, that hard work may have to continue or expand even into the coming years. The general comments, I think I mentioned this before, the property tax levy growth quotient for twenty-twenty-six is four percent. That was capped by Senate Enrolled Act One. Without that cap, uh, the, based on the calculation, it would have been five-point-six percent. Currently, there is no cap for future years, but I would guess, um, there will be future caps as the, as twenty-five and twenty-four were both capped at four percent due to legislation as well. Um, twenty-twenty-six circuit breaker is estimated, this is our guestimate number, five-point-two million. That includes current circuit breaker levels as well as, um, preliminary, uh, increases to circuit breaker due to Senate Enrolled Act One. And as I said before, we do not have net assessed value data yet for twenty-twenty-six. So into the numbers, next slide. Oh, I think we skipped two slides. Go back, okay. Sorry, one more. There we go. So these are the same charts you just saw. Now we're adding estimated twenty-twenty-five and estimated twenty-twenty-six. These are with conservative revenue numbers, um, meaning, you know, we're assuming possibly a slight decrease in interest income, for example. We're not assuming supplemental lit, uh, things like that. Um, so conservative revenues, we are also being conservative in your spending. So we're assuming in the teal bar, you're spending the full twenty-twenty-five budget and the full twenty-twenty-six budget as proposed tonight. Um, and what does that look like? So revenues, the scale on these charts are, are pretty large. Um, revenues, it is going down about half a million. Um, so right now, the estimates for the Senate Enrolled Act One losses for twenty-six, the increase in circuit breaker is about eight-hundred thousand. Um, so, but the good news is, is that next year, the city should see some local income tax growth, and those numbers have been released by the DLGF. So that's offsetting it, um, as well as, um, you, when I was working, uh, with the mayor and all of the department heads, there were some very minor local revenue, uh, assumptions that are increasing as well. So, so both of those assumptions, uh, do help keep revenues pretty steady. Between twenty-five and twenty-six, you do see a decrease in fund balance. Um, and that is because on both of the years, expenditures are assumed to be more than revenues. And again, this assumes the full budgets are spent. This also assumes, um, Park does spend down a little bit of its cash reserves. However, if you look solely at the general fund, motor vehicle highway and public safety lit, for example, those budgets are very balanced as proposed. Um, but you also do see some expenditures coming down as well. And that is really due to all of that hard work that the mayor and the department heads put in. That was cost shifts, maybe moving them, moving costs to a different fund or different funding source. Um, maybe efficiency, uh, findings of efficiencies, operational, things like that. Um, as well, uh, as just overall, um, you know, sensitivity to kind of what's coming and a really proactive way of planning for not only twenty-six, but years in advance. This is the same chart for all select budgeted funds. Again, just adding twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, this data is a little bit skewed. I've mentioned this before, but, uh, TIF had a huge, like, twenty-two million dollar project in twenty-twenty-five. So that's why you see the expenditure line coming way down. So this does include those capital. But overall, this really highlights the work that you've all done to really try and balance these budgets, because you see revenues, um, remaining somewhat steady. Again, the scale on these charts is pretty big, as well as cash balances remaining steady, or yeah, fund balances remaining steady as well. Next slide. So what does that do to the percentages? So for the big four funds, now remind you, a few slides ago, ending twenty-twenty-four, we were at about ninety percent. Assuming the full budgets are spent, we do, um, see that coming down to about fifty-six percent by the end of twenty-twenty-six. Assuming all revenues come in, you know, as conservative as we are planning for. Um, that fifty-six percent is still above the fifty percent target where we would want to see these funds at. So going forward, twenty-six or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it's going to be very important to preserve that fund, um, operating balance. Or those funds, I should say. Same for the select budget funds. Again, you see that stark drop-off that, a lot of that is due to that big project that was budgeted in TIF. But you can see it, it pretty, it pretty much flatlining in twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, not increasing, not decreasing, down to about eighty-eight percent. And that was one-hundred-and-seventy-four percent at the end of twenty-four, a few slides ago. This slide really tells you again, the takeaway are, in totality, um, the city's budgets are balanced, which is honestly the best place the city could be heading into the first year of those impacts. And beyond twenty-twenty-six, um, this is my final slide. Uh, these are simply some takeaways, and I know the mayor highlighted in her letter as well of what, what does it look like after twenty-twenty-six? And we've all had discussions of it before, so we won't dive deep into the impacts of Senate Enrolled Act One unless you all have specific questions. Um, but it's really, you know, over the course of the next several months, um, depending on what the spring brings, if that brings any clarity or, or change to what is currently adopted. Um, you know, the city will have to continue every single year to adapt to the new normal of Senate Enrolled Act One. And, and what does that look like? Is it, um, somehow higher revenue? Is it different revenue sources? Is it, you know, additional changes in the budget? But as we get closer to twenty-thirty-one, and especially as we get closer to twenty-twenty-eight with the big impacts of local income tax changing, um, you know, if nothing changes in the spring, unfortunately, you all will be tasked with those decisions. And so just something to keep in mind and more than happy to have conversations with you all as we progress. Um, but right now, it's kind of a wait and see to see what that clarity hopefully brings in the spring. Um, I mentioned here a lot of the things that I had said before, that the department has worked really hard to do to identify those operational efficiencies, um, things of that nature. Um, those, you know, will need to continue or, like I said, expand, and then closely monitor estimated impacts, um, as those continue to develop and new estimates come out of Senate Enrolled Act One. Those are gonna be the big three pieces that the mayor highlights in her letter and that, um, you know, will be asked of all of you as well as we head into this. So any questions for me? Uh, do we want to revisit any charts? Any numbers?
Tax rates?
Yes.
So according to your historical, with all the numbers, it says our city tax rate is one-point-three-nine-nine.
Can you go back to?
Yes.
Slide fourteen?
That's for the city only.
City only.
So when a taxpayer gets their bill, they're not only seeing that one-point-three.
So what was submitted last week on Friday, our proposed budget to the state, had the adopted tax rate with all the funds listed?
Yes.
And on the bottom of that, it said the adopted tax rate was two-point-four percent?
Yes.
Could you just explain to me that, why that's different?
So.
I know I'm missing something simple and I just can't wrap my.
You are, and this is a, honestly, a, a Baker Tilly trick that we, honest, it's not a trick, but, um, let me pull it open. So. So the main answer is that the levies on your Form Three are inflated. So when the levies are inflated, it's inflated tax rates. The DLGF will not pass inflated tax rates or inflated levies. However, that those levies had to be advertised and due to Indiana code, you can't levy more than you advertise. So so three of all of your property tax funds are based on your twenty twenty-six net assessed value. So it's a cushion, it's a protection because we don't know what twenty twenty-six net assessed values are. So we overinflated them a lot just to protect the city. What we wouldn't want to happen is we don't inflate them and then twenty twenty-six net assessed value comes out and we shorted you. Right? Because then you're short, then you're you're not going to.
So you inflated just because to play it safe, the assessed net assessed value and also the levy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we do. So when the DLGF reviews, hopefully by then we would have twenty twenty-six. By the time you adopt, well, I'm not sure because usually we have the twenty-six net assessed value by the end of August and we don't have it yet. So but when you adopt, you may be adopting an inflated tax rate. When the DLGF reviews, the twenty-six net assessed value should be out, they will bring it down. They will not let you adopt or levy a rate over that four percent growth.
Thanks.
Good question.
Anyone else have questions for Amber before we move on?
I always appreciate the continuity from year to year to year.
Yeah, absolutely. And if there's anything, you know, you're like, hey, what more? Let let us know. We'd always like that feedback. But I also feel, you know, when the data looks the same every year, it's familiar and lets you all digest it better. So I'll stick around. If there are questions for me later, let me know. It's great to see you all.
Thank you. And I just want to express my gratitude to Amber and Baker Tilly because we actually began our budgeting process in January of this year with the advent of SB one, immediately reached out to them and said, we need to really modify the way we're budgeting this year in light of the fact that these looming changes are coming. And that was even before we knew for sure, but we knew that the governor was advocating strongly. And it looked like he was going to be successful in making significant revenue reductions for municipalities. So Amber jumped right in and because of that, Goshen was really ahead of the game in being able to have some data for you as counselors to understand the impact of SB one. So I just want to express my gratitude for all the work that you've been helping us on for many months. Okay. Amber alluded to some of the context for this year's budget. And I do want to just do a quick refresher. I know there are many folks in the audience today who may or may not be aware of all the impacts of SEA one. So Mike, if we could go to the next slide. I do just want to review this. Because of the legislative changes with SB one, this is the estimated financial impact. Now, again, the state has not been able to tell us exactly what that impact will be. And we're anticipating that we'll have better revenue numbers by July of next year. But at this point, it's anticipated that in twenty twenty-six, as Amber mentioned, we'll have about an eight hundred thousand dollar loss. And then roughly the same in twenty twenty-seven, and then the bottom drops out in twenty twenty-eight. And that's when we, when we lose all of our local income tax, we would have more than a thirteen million dollar loss in our budget. Next slide. The state has provided an option for a replacement income tax, and this would take place beginning in twenty twenty-eight. And again, we don't have exact revenue replacement numbers. Those don't exist, we're told, but we'll have them by July of next year. But somewhere in the range of, we anticipate that we'd be able to collect between eight and ten million, almost eleven, ten and a half million with our local income tax. And the reason we don't know that is because there's no system currently that tells us parcel by parcel how much income tax each household brings into the county. And so one way of calculating that is by utilizing the median household income. And the other is by the mean household income. So that gives us at least a range. But it would, what we do know is that in twenty twenty-eight, even with the full one point two percent new income tax, we would have a loss of between two point six and five million dollars is what is anticipated. Questions before we move on? Okay. Next slide. Right, you, counselor, you look like you have a question.
No, no.
Okay.
I just left my glasses in the truck.
Okay. Anybody got some spare readers?
I don't need readers.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Find one.
Okay.
Not reliable.
You mean a good one.
Oh, I might need a minute.
All right.
So in the budget preparation for this year, we're taking both the short-term approach as well as looking at long-term modifications. So there are basically three things we can do. One, we're looking at our expense management and making cost adjustments where we can. Two, we're looking at the potential of reductions in our services and program levels and trying to make those where those have the least amount of adverse impact. And the third thing that we'll be looking at particularly in twenty twenty-six is looking at potential revenue increases. And all of these things are up for consideration, except for the one where we did adopt a local wheel tax already this year. One of the really challenging things that I tasked all of our department heads with doing is taking a real look at what does it look like if the city has a twenty percent revenue reduction? What would that look like in your department? You know, I, we hear conversations about, well, you know, the government just needs to tighten its belt and spend less. Well, when we're looking at a potential of thirty-eight percent revenue reduction, this is just twenty percent. I asked each department to come up with a scenario, what does it look like if you have to cut your budget for your department by twenty percent? So in the police department, we'd be eliminating things like potentially our SRO program or all of our special police officers, cutting up to twelve, ten sworn officers, reducing our patrol to covering just major felonies or injury crashes. Things like minor property crimes would have to be filed online. And, you know, reserving our detective work for only severe felonies. And we'd have to consider giving up things like our drug task force. And may, no, there's a, there's a considerable cost that comes with having body cameras as well as just reduc- reductions in vehicles, training and equipment. So next, in our fire department, this would be a potential loss of twenty-four firefighters in paramedic positions, closing up to two fire stations, decommissioning some of our equipment, permanent lay suspending our fourth station and potentially slower fire or medical responses and a greater reliance on neighboring departments, although they are going to be facing the same reality if we don't fix this before twenty twenty-eight. And just overall, fewer crews on duty. Next. Our street department and engineering department, you know, where the rubber li- literally meets the road, fewer miles of paved roads, line striping, so you think about crosswalks and things like that for school safety, we'd have to reduce the amount of time we give to that. Have to even roll things back like routine patching. We have sidewalk repairs that would be potentially delayed. And then, of course, all of our public parking lots, we'd have to make defer maintenance on those. And then, you know, potentially cutting positions, which means that we have a slower response for everything from brush pickup to being able to clean up trees when there's a big storm. And overall, just lower service levels. Next. Parks and Rec. This could mean seasonal program cutbacks. So we provide a lot of educational and outdoor programming and just daycare types of services for kids in the summertime as well as leagues and other community events, looking at permanently closing the Shanklin Pool or even our swim programs, shorter hours at our facilities, consolidating events, maybe reducing how we do our rentals. And of course, staffing cuts overall and deferring park upgrades. So everything from upkeep on playground equipment to our trails or just declining maintenance of our landscape. Next. And then just in general, you know, when you think about how the public interacts with city government, it would likely lead to slower permitting and inspection times, reduce code enforcement. So if your neighbor has a bunch of garbage in their yard, just slowed time in being able to address that. Delayed drainage fixes, weaker financial operations overall, fewer infrastructure projects, less maintenance on city vehicles. And then, of course, slower, we've been working so hard to advance our technology in the city and make that more customer service friendly. But that would certainly be slowed. And then cut out, cutbacks to our community outreach and engagement program. We've also been working hard to make sure that every member of this community is represented and included and has access to critical information. And then things even like slowing the expansion of our airport services. Overall, we're looking at in twenty twenty-eight, if there are not corrections to the budget. And as Amber alluded to, we're we're pressing hard on our legislators to really make changes as they go into the next budget cycle in twenty twenty-six. If they're not willing to make those changes and we have to wait until twenty twenty-seven until we have clarity on what types of changes are going to be available. We're looking at an abysmal scene. I mean, Goshen will be an entirely different city under that scenario. And I look at all the faces in this room and I think about all the hard work and investment that has gone into making Goshen a beautiful, vibrant community and all the department heads that have dedicated decades of their lives as public servants, making true sacrifices on the, for the benefit of this community. And it's genuinely disheartening. You know, the state had an option. There are a couple methodologies that they could have taken when making decisions about how they wanted to approach addressing the real need of addressing property tax and irregularities. And one, they could have looked at how they issue assessments and tried to stabilize how assessments were done. Or two, they could voice that responsibility and the burden of trying to level things out for property owners onto local municipalities. And unfortunately, they chose the latter. So they've handed us quite a pile to deal with and we're working through it. And I want to say just a huge thanks to all of the department heads who've worked very hard, not only in looking at these rather dire scenarios, but and also thinking creatively about where we can make gains. Where are we out of sync in some of our fees with other municipalities that would make it more fair, equitable for Goshen to to raise some of our fees? But we also do that with a conscientiousness, knowing it's going to impact all of you. So as we get into a review of each fund, I just want you to know that our department heads have worked very carefully as they are making these considerations, not only what's best for them personally or best for their teams, but for the greater good of Goshen as a whole. So I offer that by way of context. You can just stay on the previous slide. At this point, what we will do is I will open up our budget review fund by fund and ask counselors, I'll introduce each fund. And if you have questions or comments or any proposed changes or considerations, we'll do that fund by fund. And then we'll have an additional opportunity for questions or comments or feedback from the audience as we conclude that process. Or if there is something that's germane to somebody in the audience and you want to ask a question, we can, the council can invite them forward as well. All right. Everybody ready? No? Yes? Okay. We will start with the Board of Works. Are there any questions or comments from council on the Board of Works budget? You'll notice a significant portion of this budget has been moved from the Board of Works to our Edit Fund, which is our redevelopment, art, no, I'm sorry, Economic Development Fund that is funded through income tax. And the reason for doing that, as Amber mentioned, there is greater pressure with some of the losses that we've seen through SEA one on the general fund. And so we wanted to make sure that we're distributing the, that expense between both the property tax side and the income tax side in order to have a balanced budget. Counselor Shrock, did you have a question?
I'll ask it for you. You gonna ask her about it?
No, I was gonna say.
Go for it.
On the Board of Works, the item the P two zero five zero one, which talks about the MACOG bus line got dropped for the north side of town. Kind of a, a little bit disappointed that happened. I kind of understand why it happened. But with the new Oakland House Adventure building, Brooklyn Housing out there, you already multiple large apartment complexes that same area, Green Help's assisted living complex in that area. I personally went to at least five or six MACOG, I guess I'll call them planning meetings in open houses. The voice I'm reporting was to have some coverage up there. And when I saw this, I thought, nah. It just wasn't good news for me.
Mayor, can you explain how that happened? Yes, so I met with James Turnwald, who is the executive director for MACOG. And he said that after they had proposed that initial amount and then after they received updated information on their financial situation, the costs had increased significantly. So their estimate for operations for doing that North Loop would be about three hundred and sixty thousand, which he said they could get covered from about fifty percent of that from federal grants. The rest would be on the city. But then we would also need to contribute to the purchase of a new bus, which would be six hundred thousand dollars. And so. So that's where, given the implications of SEA one, we decided to pause on that project and I share your disappointment, counselor. I think it's important, especially with the work that La Casa is doing and the the need, it's certainly warranted. But it's one of those projects that basically was the victim of the changes with the SEA one. So there were cost escalations that MACOG had and then just the gross reality of SEU.
Thank you. I understand.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a valid point and I'm really glad that you brought it up because I think for many, it was a big disappointment. Anything else?
I have a question on the telephone line. Board of Works, sixty thousand. Is that our landline or is that cell phones?
That's everything.
Cell phones and landlines.
Any other questions about Board of Works? Okay. Yes, no? Okay. Building Department. You'll notice there there was a slight increase in the budgeted amounts from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. And the reason for that is we had two ordinance officers that moved from PD into the Building Department so that we could have a cohesive ordinance team. Before, there were some things that would happen in PD and some ordinance items that would happen in the Building Department. But there wasn't always. But there wasn't always uh cohesive communication about either side. And so by combining them, they're working collaboratively and we can have a a better response to needs, whether they're happening inside or outside somebody's home.
Then on this again, here we now we have more cellphone in each department. So the sixty thousand doesn't cover all of our cell phones or?
That's correct.
What does that sixty thousand cover?
So it would be um, there'd be like administrative positions potentially that would be included in that. Dustin Newt uh would probably have a better grasp on that line. Okay, I'll get you a more detailed answer on that before our next meeting. So we'll know the specific breakdown.
I was trying to follow some of the where we moved from like the police to here. And I I couldn't figure out where that came from. Do you know what? You know what page that might be on? Was that in the police? Like on page fourteen?
So it would be in their part timeline.
You know, which line?
Part timeline. For twenty twenty five.
Okay, we didn't budget anything last year, so.
Must have been in their full timeline. Chief, do you remember where we moved that from? The two ordinance officers? I thought they were in the part timeline. And I've got to find the right page for.
Page fourteen, but that.
Thank you.
Like I said, I didn't see any for last year to begin with, but.
Yeah. So it would have been in the twenty twenty four actual. Possibly. Chief, they've been in the, I mean, they've been in the building department all year, so. Are there other questions about the building department?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, Myron's not here tonight, is he?
He is not.
I just wanted to thank everybody involved in the building department for doing what they're doing, mostly in my district. Making uh all the neighborhoods fam- more family friendly and a better place to live in general. So I tip my hat to all the guys. They're out there battling that battle. As we all know, it's a tough one.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, next we have the buildings and grounds. And I talked at length when we met for education work session about how we are merging buildings and grounds with parks maintenance. Any questions about that department? Okay, we'll move on to the cemetery department. Any questions about the cemetery department? Okay.
Um, I think I have a question overall that might differ from other areas with their budget. We are giving a cost of living raise this year, right?
The budget includes a three percent cost of living and judge adjustment with another half percent for merit based increases. So I think almost all the department heads budgeted three and a half percent, just so they would have the maximum amount allowable to work with.
Thank you for making.
Yep. Okay, central garage. City Council.
The uh other equipment line of ten thousand dollars. It's the top of page seven. We had that last year and again this year. Would that be the iPads?
No.
Thank you.
That would be a contribution to a software subscription for managing doing board management and online uh packets rather than paper packets.
On the city council.
Yes, sir.
Um we have two thirty five hundred dollar lines there. One of them's for travel and expenses and the other one is for retreat.
Yes.
We haven't used those.
I encourage you to.
I would encourage either to move them somewhere else.
Okay.
That we can use that money. It's not a lot, but you know, look at somewhere else to move that because that money's just has has set there for what, two years?
There are lots of continuing education opportunities available for counselors. Um, so I I do think it's important to leave those options available, particularly as we are trying to um, win hearts and minds with our state legislators, making sure that we are up to date on all those legislative changes. I think participating in some of those AIM events can be very useful. So uh, that would be my justification for keeping them in there, but uh, welcome additional conversation about that among the counselors.
I kind of agree with Doug on that a little bit. If you can find a, if there is something that I wouldn't have a problem giving up the the retreat one. If it's some other department for one reason or another would really, really be able to use that thirty five hundred bucks. Make it happen.
Okay.
My personal opinion.
Are you making an official motion at this point or just?
No.
This is up for discussion and we can revisit that. Okay, I'm making a notion, a head note.
Um, for clarification, if that if the thirty five hundred it was, if it if we wanted to move it, we can move it anywhere in the general, just the general fund.
In the general.
In the general fund, okay.
Okay. Any questions about the court treasures office?
Why is um the insurance going down so much? Is it because that part time moved? No, you wouldn't have insurance.
I think there's just fewer overall positions in that department.
It is very unusual, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, considering the three previous years.
Yeah, that'd be one less full time position than what we had budgeted for last year.
I'm just gonna say there again, we have twelve hundred dollars for cell phones.
Any questions about community engagement?
I think it's important to point out in this budget that while the positions have been removed from the budget, that work is not not being done. It's it's still being done. It's being done by uh our Michael Wambas sitting over there. And uh he's doing multiple positions at the same time and uh, I appreciate the fact that your office is combining positions during as much as they possibly can to make sure that that work is still done.
Thank you. Any questions about city court?
I do.
Yes?
Last year, we talked about needing that extra position. Was that the part time or the full time position? It was an extra full time.
Okay.
Sorry, Judge. I should have.
We'll see how we can do with four.
Okay.
Like we did up until we hired the fifth one. So yeah, the girls are willing, they're willing to, they, we operated with four for quite a long time, but being the fifth one really helped out. Especially at court. We have one of them in the court. So we only had four girls and the four clerks and innovation. We have just three girls, three clerks in the clerk's office and one would be in here. And so they got to run here in the back. That always helped to have five clerks and then have four when we had court. Um, you probably know we're moving. They're gonna move us over. The police department needs this building. We're really happy here. We like to stay here, but we're not. We get, we understand that. So they're putting us over in the lower level, the big courthouse downtown. Um, we've already had the walkthroughs and we've done all that and there'll be some adjustments with that. So part of our budget several for several years has been doing some renovation in the clerk's office, but since we're moving, then that's off the table as well. So for this year, for our budget, we're not going to replace that fifth clerk, which is a big cut in our budget and we're not, I think we had allocated like twenty thousand dollars for some renovation. That's off of our budget as well.
Right, thank you.
Engineering. Environmental resilience and forestry. I want to commend Aaron's team. They worked really hard to find ways uh to fund the work that their forestry team is doing with the USDA grant that we have procured. So you'll see a lot of those uh expenses uh for both uh capital and some uh subsidy for staffing moved to the USD forestry grant. Uh, which is nice, provides us with a bit of reprieve for this year, but we'll need to look at uh the impact of that. I'm sorry, for twenty twenty six, but then we'll need to look at that impact beyond that as well.
Can you explain? Um, maybe I missed this in the conversation. So the Buildings and Grounds Department. I thought my misunderstanding, I thought that was all going to encompass environmental resilience and two. Are they staying separate budgets? Are they all going to combine into the one?
The environmental resilience is focusing primarily primarily on our forestry as well as looking at um our overall uh environmental sustainability. So whether that has to do with operational efficiency of our facility use or looking at our land management use. Um, you know, making sure that we're continuing to focus on those important uh efficiency gains that we can make as well as environmental sustainability. Um, so they're an important component of our Buildings and Grounds Department. And then we will also have um a division of the um facility management and then division of our groundskeeping. So if you think of buildings and grounds as comprising overall facility management and then overall groundskeeping, which we have hundreds of acres of grounds to take care of. And then uh our trees throughout the entire city, uh managing all of those plus our looking at our overall sustainability of our uh facilities, grounds and uh maintenance utilization. So uh, we think it'll be a a strong advantage having them work more closely together. Do you have a question, Phil? You look like you're
No, I just
contemplative.
I know that there are people here that want to talk about this department and so just again, that will they'll have an opportunity to do that.
Absolutely. Yep. Uh, questions about the fire budget? Legal department. Mayor's Department. We had the reduction. I had asked for additional position last year. Um, but we're going to pause on that at this time, given S E A one. Police.
Wait, wait, we skipped planning.
Did I skip one? Sorry, Planning Department. Any questions? Police.
Wait, I do have, remind me what the professional services would have been in planning. That's not there this year. It was in twenty twenty five budget, it was hundred fifty thousand. What's not?
So uh updating our ordinance and digitizing our ordinances is a special project. So that's not included in next year's budget. Even though the work will continue, we had the contractual agreement in this year. Technology. Sorry, can we go back to police? I have a question. Sorry. Um on the other equipment, it's significantly lower. Did that cost get moved elsewhere? It went from three hundred and eleven to one seventy five. Can you tell me what page you're on? I'm on page fifteen and it's line zero one five four.
Mayor, would you like me to speak on that a little bit?
Please do.
Excuse me. Um, Councilman, that had to do with, there was some funds that were um oh, my mind just went blank. We had a project, um, had an invoice and contract set up, so the funds were saved for the following year. That got entered into that balance. So that previous budget was not actually three hundred thousand in the other equipment. That included what was encumbered from the year before. Um, so not only did we not have that encumbrance, we also did reduce that line by about seventy five thousand, I believe. Um for twenty twenty six as well.
So when Baker Tilly pulled the budget numbers for this year, it includes encumbrances for the twenty twenty five column. So it that you may see it's higher than what the council voted on last year and that's because those got added into our budgeted numbers for this year. Questions about the technology? Street Department. Local Road and Streets Fund. In the two two oh two on page eighteen. Motor Vehicle Restricted Fund, two two oh three. Parks and Recreation.
Which basketball court's being paved?
Tanya.
Is it the one out at Shanklin? And then the uh pickleball courts, I'm assuming those are the ones out by Model Elementary School. Thank you.
We need new batteries for that, Mike. It is working. Oh, great.
Um, also, the the lines that drastically go down like two ten and three eleven, they went from forty five thousand to five thousand and twenty one thousand to two thousand. Is that uh due to moving those things to Buildings and Grounds as well? It's just a decrease in that area.
A lot of these capital projects that you have listed, I'm assuming those are being paid for, I would think from cash balances. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is uh Riverdale Park? We do have some um minor um projects planned for there. We will get some signage.
Projects planned for there. We will get some signage identified and then some cleanup of the existing fencing and for kind of a phase one of that area.
Would I be out of line if I asked about the pavilion for Dax apart? It's not on that list.
You are not, not out of line in asking that. I think that we have just pushed that to future budget.
Okay. Aviation fund. Increase because we added a. Part-time administrative assistant position. And then in our edit fund 2209 on page 22. Any questions about those projects? Or partnership programs?
I think it. It might be a good idea to explain the combining of like the redevelopment line and how. That was decided.
Okay, absolutely. In the past, we used to budget individual lines for specific redevelopment partners or community partners. We have changed the methodology in current years so that. I've asked the council to appropriate a specific total amount of funds. And then we ask each of our community partners to come and give a public presentation. In front of the Community Relations Commission. And then the Community Relation Commission makes recommendations on how those funds are distributed. So that it happens in a public setting. And there's an opportunity for feedback and Councillor Lederach also sits on that board. And serves as the liaison from council. To the, or from the Community Relations Commission and council. So could also weigh in if you have additional comments on that process.
Well, it's, it's incredible. The partners we have, and I think they're represented out here in the audience. Some are even dressed in their shirts. It's important in, in. So many ways, but I think that some of them want to speak, so I'll let them do it. It's just that. It's impressive to sit and listen to all the good things that are happening with community partners here in town.
Yes. So these are. Funds that come through. Income tax and they're, the purpose of that is economic development overall. The council can make decisions on how best to use those funds. We have selected partners who further the mission that's outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. So we know that as a city, we can't do it all. We can't provide services for housing and we can't provide services for homeless folks. But we can allocate a portion of money. So we have, you know, some small amounts of money that we've portioned to partner with community organizations. To amplify the work that we have already identified that the city wants to accomplish, but that we can't accomplish with our own staff. So that's the purpose of those funds. Any additional questions on edit? Robation? Redevelopment operating. Our leasing funds, these are funds used for public safety. So in the past, you'd see a leasing one and a leasing two. Those have been combined into just the leasing two. Unsafe building fund.
But I see we don't have anything budgeted this year. What did, what did we do with that in 2025?
So that was set aside for our. Oh my gosh, Mark, like the name of the program, the receivership program. Thank you. So I came to council and asked for a specific appropriation. It would be my intention that if we wanted to continue to do something like that, that I would come back to council. We've resolved a lot of that problem. But there might be other reasons to continue that. But I did not include that in this budget.
Thank you.
Public safety, LOIT, these are income tax funds that are collected. And this is part of the funding that would be going away in 2028. Then opioid restricted. We're using a portion of that fund and proposing this year for mobile integrated health program. We had secured grant funding through the state and they've cut that funding. So we're shifting some of that to our opioid funding. Township fire. So I think councils and public may, may or may not remember that a couple of years ago. The city of Goshen developed a memorandum of understanding that we provide care. An emergency response to all of Elkhart Township. So not just our city limits, but it extends beyond our city. And in exchange for that, we received some of the township funds. We have a donation fund for PD. Then we have a court fee fund. Then our residential lease fees. So a portion of one of our. Our inspectors and a portion of an administrative assistant are paid out of the residential lease fee. Questions about stormwater? And I made a note there that we had a. Major spend down of our cash reserves last year that we had accumulated in stormwater. Part of that went for a street sweeper this year.
Does that explain the line below that too? 201.
The capital outlay?
Yeah.
Yes. We also were able to use a portion of that funding. For the lead line replacement project in North Goshen. Because that involved total street replacement, including some, some of the stormwater issues that were there. Dustin, did you want to add anything to that? I got it. Okay. Economic improvement district. So this is a self taxing district by. Property owners in the downtown who elect to. Pay an additional property tax amounts for downtown beautification. So they have a board and. They collect a small amount of money each year for things like planters or snow removal. They have been bolstered this year by additional support from our parks department with Tanya and also from our. Director of Public Works who are meeting with them regularly to provide consultation on. The, some of the design and structure of our downtown planters and things like that. Red Hawk Academy. So we, our class sizes have doubled this year, excited to say. So we have additional expenses anticipated with that. Any questions about our debt service? Cigarette tax. Cumulative capital fund. Cumulative capital for fire on page 31. Did you have a question, councillor?
Somebody did ask me the other day about. The sidewalk replacement program that we used to have is, is the 50/50 or whatever we call it going to be reinstated? How's that going?
It is. Now I have to remember where we put it.
It looks like it was on 501. Sidewalk replacement, or is that a different?
That would be right. That is where.
Page?
30.
Ah, there we go.
It's 501.
I'm sorry?
It's under 501 there.
Yes.
370.
Thank you.
So we are going back to doing that or?
Yes. I, I believe the call just went out for this year too. Is that correct Dustin or is in process of? Okay.
So when people want that, just for those that do want it, and I know there's some people that do. How would they get that started, that process?
Dustin?
So yeah, we have a running list in the engineering department. So anybody up into this point is on that list. And again, we have, we've rated all of our sidewalks one to 10. So if you have a sidewalk rated to seven to 10, they do not qualify for 50/50. Sidewalk's in too good of a condition. If it's less than a seven rating, then yes, they would qualify. And if it's actually between a one and a four, which is really poor, then we're not even going to charge the 50/50 of those.
So they just need to reach out to you?
The engineering department will look at how the sidewalk's currently rated and help them decide whether they qualify for 50/50.
You can find their information on the website.
Yes, and I think there is actually a form on the 311 homepage. Michael, can you confirm that while we go through this and we'll. Circle back to that before the end of the meeting. Let's see. Then we have the TIF funds. Any questions about? The Southeast TIF? Consolidated TIF. Leprestirdorf. East College. Becky, can you just educate people on why that's just a new one that's starting, we're starting to budget for this year?
Yes, so for East College, we participated with the utility expansion. Through the issuance of an economic development revenue bond. So as the property tax payments come in as new TIF, we turn around and we pay that back out as the debt service because at the time of the project. We had pledged future revenue. As that payment. So we have to plan for that outlay. Within the budget.
Thank you. And we have the, on page 33, the environment, are they, sorry, the aviation federal grant. So we would get. Funding. The city has to fund a portion, but then we get a large federal grant to cover the majority of the expenditures. And then we've also included the budget for the 2026. USDA grant. Then the cemetery capital. Geo bond proceeds. Any questions there? By our pension funds or police pension funds? And then since our last meeting, we have the new municipal wheel tax that we have added as a new fund.
Are we on the wheel tax?
We are.
Sound like your voice went real low.
I think it's just the talking. I got to the.
All right. So for the wheel tax, that 750, is that, is that the proceeds coming in from that tax?
We're estimating 780,000 in revenue and planning on spending 750.
Okay. And if. No, when the state.
When.
When the state throws us money for the community crossing and the mile match. Do we set up, we set up separate line items for that?
Yes.
When it comes in? Okay.
I mean, okay. Not in this fund. Community crossings would be reflected elsewhere, not in the municipal wheel tax. I don't want to mislead you. This is the tricky thing where all the. All the paving projects end up in multiple funds. So.
Okay.
Won't, the community crossings grants. Funds don't end up in the wheel tax.
But we don't. We haven't projected any income for either one of those?
We haven't projected because that wouldn't start until. Like mid-year goes into effect. So we wouldn't anticipate collecting those revenues until 2027.
Okay, okay. I just, I just wanted to kind of be aware where to look for them.
We'll, we'll highlight it and bold it.
Thank you.
So we can make sure that that's very clear. General comments or questions from the council before we open up to additional comments and questions from the audience?
I don't have anything additional, but I would request a small break before we go to the audience.
Okay. We'll take a five minute break and then come back.
That's what I, I did that right. One year. Domain gold. Well, bigger go home. Yeah, I just. I have such a. I had a whole paragraph. Just said. When I grew up. You had to really look hard. So that was before the power companies put everything up to make it so. Back in those days, which we took out power lines all the time. All the time. And I just. Kind of guarantees maybe the future. Maybe they'll be able to enjoy what I enjoy. I was. Riding around town on a bicycle.
Just a.
Carefree. Very rarely even seen in sun. And all their make it trips were. 120. So they were big and healthy. Some of them are old and healthy. I've noticed over the last several years, it's been some big old ones go away. For one reason or another. You guys are fighting hell of an uphill battle. All the.
Take care. Gina, Gina.
I mean, we did have one of our East Coast neighborhood guys go in.
Oh, yeah.
And vines. All around everything. They were, they were wrapped around that one direction either behind the. And you went in there a bit at once. You had two guys do it this summer. And we even cleaned out an area around that. All the way to the top. And all he wanted to do was just freeze the life out of everything.
High boys, yeah.
I asked him, say, how do I do one of those? Uh, spray. I can spray one little area. For some reason, probably like a cache of like a half a dozen of show up.
Hundred percent.
Close to where they are.
No, that I agree.
You have some cloud damage when you spray. You spray, and if they're weeds too.
Yeah.
You may be hit those.
Yeah.
Tries to weed right up and kills them.
Yeah, I can do that. There's a clock.
And those vines do that too.
She's giving him two minutes, but we'll have to kind of make a council. No, I mean, I honestly, I thought I would. I will.
We don't want to go, we don't want to cross that.
Okay. Um, at this point, we have nineteen folks who have signed up to speak tonight. Uh typically, the council would provide each person with three minutes. Given the hour, I'm going to recommend to the council that we reduce that to one to two minutes. Um, so I will uh welcome the folks up who have signed up to speak to the council in regards to budget items this year. And council president Weddle has agreed to use his iPad with a timer so that you will hear some kind of boing, boing, boing when it's, when your time is up. Uh, so we, we will cap the time at two minutes. All right, the first person on my list is Chuck Hamilton. Chuck, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Ready?
Yeah.
Start and go. Hi, I'm Chuck Hamilton. I represent Air Supremacy over Goshen. We are a, our large model RC airshow, uh held at the Goshen Airport at the future. This is our eighth year. We bring over a hundred and fifty pilots uh with them. They bring about one point five individuals, so roughly around four hundred and fifty people. Unique visits to Goshen. We're here over three days, almost four days, uh contributing to the local community. We sell out two hotel uh rooms, block of rooms, food, gas, restaurant, shopping. Um, a lot of these people travel in RVs that come to shows because these airplanes are that big. Uh, they schedule their time to take advantage of the local RV community, to buy new RVs, repair RVs, service and buy new trailers. Um, we're more of a historical event. Um, it's really kind of exciting, growing hobby. We call these are not your grandfather's model airplanes. These things are ten, twelve-foot wingspans and they're museum qualities. Uh, this country is based on two things, cars and aviation. Um, and this is just our small way of contributing to the history of America, uh and the people that dedicate their lives. Uh, or it's a great hobby. The city's been kind to support us in the past. Um, I do have some lead behinds here to uh to share with more details on the economic impacts that we brought, we bring to the city. But then at the day, the city airport, the city uh itself, the managers, the people have been awesome to work with, supportive. Um, we've branded the event Air Supremacy, uh Air Supremacy over Goshen for the simple reason that when you think of Talladega, Indy, those are racetracks. It's never Coca-Cola four hundred or Brickyard. These are events and they're hap- happening. Uh, Air Supremacy over Goshen is uh spread worldwide. We have you, two YouTubers that follow us. Um, we do live streams all across the world. It's amazing our social media following. I work for a manufacturing company. Our social media following doubles. What this company I work for does, it's pretty neat, pretty strong. The mayor's been out there, Mike's been out there, but uh I thank you for your time. I keep it short because you got a lot of people behind me to uh to get going. What's the time? All right, thank you, everybody.
Chuck, what are the dates?
I'm sorry, June uh twenty, twenty-fourth through to twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chris Steger, you are on, you're up next, and Bethany, you're on deck. Welcome.
Am I on? Okay. Thank you, Council. My name's Chris Steger. I'm the president of the Economic Development Corporation here in Elkhart County. The EDC was founded in the early two thousands. Uh, by local leaders dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for our generations to come. Uh, our leaders recognized that technology advances in offshore manufacturing uh would really dramatically change our county if collaborative action wasn't taken. Back then, as we still do now, we have eight wages that are running behind the national averages. We've seen some uh technology improvement and some say, well, why do we want to see that? Well, when we develop technology in our buildings, you have more assessed value. Your, we build built better buildings, so we're constantly trying to look at uh assessed value within your community. Wage growth, which in twenty twenty-eight, that will impact that median and mean income number that we're talking about. And uh, one of the things I never thought we'd get involved with was talent and attraction development. There's about thirty thousand uh students that graduate within a hundred miles here, and we do an abysmal job at retention of those. So we work with industry to try to establish additional career pathways that grow uh income opportunities locally. I've uh prepared eight packets, if, and I'll leave those with you, and if I come in under a minute, maybe I'll get a gold star for today.
Thank you, Chris. Well done. Bethany, welcome.
I don't know if I'm gonna beat his time. I'll do my best. Good evening. I'm Bethany Hartley, President and CEO of the South Bend Elkhart Regional Partnership. Thank you, Mayor Lickety, and the council members for allowing us to speak today. I will attempt to be brief. I came before you all recently, um, in the last eight months to speak about our organization. So this is the Cliff Notes version. And uh why we are important and a part of this ecosystem and this uh, your economy. The Goshen is a huge piece of the South Bend Elkhart region, and when we talk about this region and attracting people and companies into this region, Goshen is that quality of place, the small town feel, the amenities that our newcomers are looking for, the current residents are looking for. And we're really proud to have Goshen as a part of the South Bend Elkhart region. When we think too about strategically how we are invested in this community, as Chris alluded to, and Chris serves on our board of directors, we are looking at talent and how do we attract them. And so we administer on behalf of the three counties in Indiana, the Ready Program and formerly the Regional Cities Program. And across those two programs into the city of Goshen, we have done a nine and a half million dollar investment that has been leveraged for a hundred and nineteen million dollars, primarily focused on what the city is focused on, good quality housing, trails, amenities, parks, recreation. We want this to be a place that people pick, not that they're forced to be here, and we know that your city is doing that. And when I look at the, the proposed twenty percent budget cuts, my heart breaks because this is a community that we love and cherish, and it's a destination not only for the residents here, but residents outside of your city limits. And we would love to see that continue and be a partner in continuing that work. Beyond the dollars that we have attracted into this region, as we look at what the state of Indiana is focused on with regionalism and the executive order that came out in April, our region was reaffirmed as a region of three counties, Elkhart, Marshall and St. Joseph. And even more economic development work is being done at a regional level. And as we think about that, our connectivity, ninety-six percent of our residents live, work, and live and work across our region. So there is a strong connectivity, and as goes any one county, any one city, any one town, so goes the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you mu- very much, Bethany. Trevor Doherty and Danae Worth is next on deck.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Trevor Doherty. I am the Executive Director of the Northern Indiana Clay Alliance and the owner and publisher of Edible Michiana, a regional food and culture magazine, both of which are based here in Goshen. This week, thousands of visitors will come to Goshen for the fourteenth annual Michiana Pottery Tour. Some return every year to support our artists, while others will experience Goshen for the first time. Together, they will spend more than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars on clay art this weekend, but they will also stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants and learn more about the Maple City. The tour is possible in part because of the city's support through the Community Partnership Program. These dollars certainly matter, but the partnership, partnership itself carries significant weight. It signals to the public, to other granting organizations and to our Clay Alliance members that Goshen values this work. I've lived here for twenty-five years and regularly travel around this region for both of my jobs. Everywhere I go, people know Goshen, and what we've built here is unique. It's an ecosystem created over decades by individuals, organizations and neighbors working together. When I attend First Fridays, Arts on the Mill Race, or any other program, really, I don't see politics being played out. I see exhausted parents looking for affordable entertainment with their kids after a long week. Teenagers out with friends are on a first date because they know it's a safe place to be. And retirees connecting with other people in the community, all made possible through this delicate equation we fostered here over the last twenty-plus years. I thank you for the work that you're doing. It's not easy, and I know that your hand has been forced. Thank you for continuing to do this hard work to make Goshen a special place. I will continue to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Next, we have Danae Worth, and after that, Ron Hoke.
Hard act to follow. Um, Danae Worth, I'm the current president of the Goshen Historical Society Museum. On behalf of the Goshen Historical Museum, I'd like to thank the city of Goshen for providing partnership grant opportunities for nonprofits through the Edit Funds. Nonprofits often bridge the gap between physical needs and social, creative and educational needs that foster a community sense of belonging. Continuing grant opportunities for nonprofits is an investment in both community building and well-being. This type of investment impacts both current and future generations. The grant also serves as proof that the city of Goshen values our work and our services, which lends credibility to encourage others to invest in our efforts. We have managed these grants responsibly and as a catalyst, leveraging the funds to grow our museum and build sustainability, allowing us to continue our work. Their value has been multiplied many, many times over. The museum building itself represents one of the few businesses that in, that have had a continuous presence in downtown Goshen since eighteen eighty-eight. And it's our goal to serve and be there for many years to come. This grant funding has been a seed from which new programs, partnerships and opportunities have grown. With your continued support through grant opportunities using Edit Funds, we will continue to strengthen our downtown, enrich cultural life and preserve Goshen stories for generations to come. I ask you personally to continue investing in nonprofits like ours because your decision directly shapes the kind of community we all want to live in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ron, do you have anything you'd like to add? You do have a time.
I'm Ron Hoke. I'm the Executive Director of the Goshen Historical Society and start the clock. I want to thank the city of Goshen for this partnership program. We've been part of it now for two or three years. And all the nonprofits that are represented here tonight are benefiting from that program. And the city of Goshen benefits from the multiplying effect where they are able to do things that you cannot do. Uh, I wouldn't want to sit in your chairs. Uh, I've been in watching Goshen city budgets since nineteen seventy-four. And the task that the state has given you to solve over the next three to four or five years is the worst one I've ever seen a deck of cards dealt to a city council. I don't envy your position. I know there has to be some cut somewhere. Everybody's gonna have some pain. The nonprofits are probably thinking, well, maybe we won't have a lot of pain, but some pain, but they're willing to accept some of that pain. Just to keep the program going, because if there's a little dip in the program, it's different. It's kind of a easing down. You're doing that same thing with your budgets. You're easing down in fear of twenty twenty-eight. Well, the nonprofits have the same problem. We don't want to have that cut. We can't just end the program because we're scared of, of not maybe having funds in twenty twenty-eight for it. But let's, let's ease it down. We're willing to take some of the pain. And then by twenty twenty-eight, the state may actually know what they're gonna do, and you'll know what you can do. So I'm asking you to continue the program for all the nonprofits, maybe not a hundred percent. We're not asking for more. But let us help you and we'll take some of that pain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoke. Next, we have uh Mr. Wayne Stubbs, and after that, Deb Ferguson.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Stubbs, excuse me, the president of the Elkhart County Symphony. Um, I, first of all, this was not a part of my script, but understanding and accepting uh that we may lose financial support, it doesn't minimize the fact that we need to have a good life in Goshen and Elkhart and Elkhart County. And, and I believe that the Elkhart County Symphony plays a huge role in that. Tonight, I'd like to just share a few of the values that we believe that we bring. Uh, we bring cultural and social value. The Elkhart County Symphony musicians are your neighbors, your workplace colleagues, your child's teacher. They bring together people of all ages and backgrounds, encouraging social interaction and forming connections that can turn into lifelong friendships. We bring diversity and inclusion value to the community. The symphony strives to be more, more culturally relevant by featuring diverse musicians, composers, collaborating with local community musicians and supporting, celebrating different musical traditions. Our symphony musicians participate in community outreach beyond the traditional concert hall. They perform in local libraries for local businesses, for youth programs and much, much more. The, the symphony provides educational experiences for the community by partnering with schools. Each season, the Elkhart County Symphony has a side-by-side concert that features either Goshen High School, Concord High School or Elkhart High School. And I would just close by saying a great community needs a great orchestra, and we appreciate your support. I, I did need to mention, and I forgot I didn't, uh, with this year's grant that we received, we have an upcoming performance partnership with the Elkhart, with the Goshen Theater, and also in uh the spring uh performance at Souter Hall at beautiful Goshen College. Thank you.
Dr. Stubbs, what's the date for the performance at the theater? October fifth, everybody. Got that on their calendar? Thank you. Okay, next we have Deb Ferguson. After that, John Mishler.
Thanks, somebody else's time for thirty-six seconds. Deb Ferguson, I live at four twenty-three South Sixth Street. I'm here to show my support and appreciation for the Department of Environmental Resilience. When we think of the word environment, our minds usually turn to the larger world around us, air, water, trees, plants, weather conditions. I'd like you to think about other environments for a minute. Think about the environment in your home or workplace. Many of us are fortunate enough to live and work in an environment which is comfortably warm or cool. We have running water at our disposal, electricity to power our lights and appliances. We're so used to having them, we tend to take them for granted until we lose them. We're also very aware of the cost of these comforts, and we act accordingly to save money and use energy responsibly. We can program our thermostats by energy-efficient appliances and conserve water, all of which are ways in which we can save money. That is what the DR, DER is doing for our city. Since their inception in twenty nineteen, thanks in large part to the youth of our city. Since their inception in twenty nineteen, thanks in large part to the youth of our city, the DER has been working with the city departments to make sensible decisions which enable them to use energy wisely while also saving money. Successful programs have been implemented in several departments, and energy audits will continue this work as our community grows. In fact, from the figures I've seen, the DER is going a long way to pay for itself. By continuing their work, the DER is saving money for the community while helping the greater environment. In the process, they are keeping the council's promise to the youth of our community. Most people are aware of the DER's work in our community with outdoor, the outdoor environment. As I enjoy the city's parks and outdoor spaces, I often see DER employees, as well as many volunteers, removing invasive species, trimming trees, planting new native plants and trees. They do all that's necessary to preserve our resources, both indoors and out, for our use now and in the future. It's a huge task which they're handling with great success. I confess that until recently, I had no idea of the scope of their influence on our community. And I'm very grateful. We need to protect all these things that we so often take for granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next, we have John Mishler, and after that, we'll have Gabeo Brenneman Ocha.
Hello, I'm John Mishler. I'm a local sculptor. My bag, my studio is at the Old Bag Factory, and I also teach at Goshen College. The city of Goshen is being learned, is becoming known as an artistic city. And my project with the city is to place sculptures downtown made by my present and former students in Goshen College. You can put artwork in buildings, and that's a good thing to do. But placing sculptures outside really shows that your city has culture, and people can see those sculptures when they drive down Main Street. The students that I've worked with have learned a great deal from this project. They've learned to create large-scale sculptures that will stand up to the weather. And they also make artwork that reaches beyond just classroom assignments. I think that's very important where the community gets involved. There's been several articles in the Goshen News this summer about the new sculptures downtown, and this reflects well on the city. This has given students recognition and self-confidence as artists. One of my students is Ryan Snyder. He says now people recognize him from being in the newspaper. And his sculpture is robot-looking next to the Hive of the Light store, which also sells crystals. That store liked his sculpture so much, they held a contest to give it a nickname. The next name is Richard Greer, Richard Gear, because the sculpture is made out of gears. And Ryan is now sending his, selling his sculptures at that location. So it's great where business and artists can work together and work together in the city. So I would like to see this project continue.
Thank you very much, John.
He had a booth at the recent Arts on the Mill Race, and he had some very, very nice projects.
Thank you. After Gabeo, then we have Amanda Rose.
Howdy.
Did I mispronounce your name?
Well, I'll clarify. My middle name is Gabriel, but everybody in town knows me as Gabo. That's just what I've gone with. I'm a senior at Goshen High School. I will be eighteen in T minus two weeks. So I came here to mainly advocate for the idea of a town hall meeting. I also thank Norm Kaufman for his words earlier. And I live here in downtown Goshen, and I'm aware of the SEI One bill that is that could generate a revenue loss of around thirty-eight percent. And I was thinking that, well, a town hall meeting would be great because while I am aware that council members have voiced their concerns about this bill, I think it would be appropriate for people, anybody living in this town, to voice their concerns. And I also think, like me and a lot of other people, we just want to understand why the state legislature is doing this. And, I mean, as someone who moved to Goshen from Vermont, I really appreciated the many programs and recreational activities that this town really provides. And that's one of the reasons why I love this community, and I do not want that to change. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have next, we have Amanda Rose, and after that, Evan Miller.
Hi, council. At risk of sounding like a broken record, I'm going to go ahead and say my part here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Amanda Rose, and I am the Director of First Fridays in downtown Goshen. I'm here on behalf of our arts and cultural community. But more importantly, I'm here on behalf of the thousands of residents and visitors who lives are enriched because of the investments this body has made in many of these programs. I know you are faced with difficult budget decisions. Every dollar must be weighed against competing needs, notably supporting much-needed public safety initiatives. But I want to urge you respectfully and strongly not to reduce funding for our community partnerships and to continue reaching out to state legislators about the consequences of SEA One. These partnerships are not extras, but rather essential to our community. The programs that you support are vital, not only to our sense of place, but to our local economy. People who attend performances and festivals also dine in our restaurants and shop in our stores. These programs generate tax revenue, attract tourism, and fuel small business growth. But beyond the dollars, these partnerships do something incredibly powerful. They build community. They help us tell our shared story and give our town a sense of place. In this major time of divide, they bring people together across districts, regardless of age, race, background, or income. They give our young people opportunities to express themselves in positive, constructive ways in safe environments. They provide joy and reprieve in times when our community desperately needs them. All of these things ultimately contribute to the health and safety of our amazing community. I believe cutting the funds to these partnerships would be detrimental to that public health, and I know many of us in this room who have been touched by these programs would agree. To summarize, when you invest in arts and culture, you invest in the health, identity, and future of this city. When you cut those investments, you don't just cut a line item, you cut opportunities, connections, and pride in place. Your continued investment in these partnerships builds a great deal of trust in the city in a time when many of us are feeling unheard by our state representatives. I trust and know the city of Goshen has our best interests at heart, and I urge this body to invest in that trust and the health and happiness of Goshen, not because it's easy, but because it's absolutely necessary. Thank you for your leadership, time, and all the energy you continue to put into making Goshen such a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Evan. After that, Marcia Yost and Shelley Fidler.
Good evening. I'm Evan Miller. I live at six twelve South Third Street. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Department of Environmental Resilience. In twenty nineteen, in a series of three meetings, the city created this new department. I went back and listened to the recordings of those meetings because I wanted to find out what was the impetus. These efforts were enthusiastically supported. Some council members remarked that attendance at these three meetings is arguably the highest in recent memory. I don't have time in these two minutes, I thought I had three, to talk about the financial benefits the city is realizing from this department. They are substantial, and I encourage you to look at those. But financial ROI is not the whole story. For me, this is a story about offering action and hope to our young people in the faces of some very difficult conditions. I'm an old man and a grandfather. I know of many young people my children's age and younger who are fearful of the world they're inheriting from us. They do not believe that their lives will be anywhere near as good or as comfortable as the life I'm blessed to live. I find that sad beyond words. This department is an antidote. It was born out of the request of young people asking for action. The story that we've heard this last year of the Young AmeriCorps volunteers showing up to hand out city trees on behalf of our community and this department last spring, after they had been told to stay home because their funding was cut, that they showed up fills my heart with hope. I don't envy the job that you have in front of you. But I'm here to tell you that I and others will be watching and calling on you to uphold the commitments our city has made to the future generations to make Goshen a good place to live and work. Look at that, six seconds.
Thank you so much, Evan. Next, we have Marcia Yost.
Good evening, Mayor Liptee. Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I love this town. I don't think there's a person sitting here that doesn't. We love this place. I've lived in this town for a long time. I've given fifty years to the arts in this county. And we've heard many artists of various kinds up here sharing. And what I want to say is, you know, about thirty years ago, Goshen didn't look like this at all. What made the difference for this town is the arts, our guilds, our performances, our crimson airs, our, all these things that have come together to make us unique. And to that end, the Goshen Theater is the hub of that in our downtown. Our downtown, that marquee, that's Goshen. The arts have taken a hit. The National Endowment of the Arts, the Indiana Arts Commission, all of them have watched their funds get reduced. As you have watched, Goshen's funds be reduced. There are lots of needs there. We voted for you, and we trust you to do what's best for our community. But I would just share, let us not forget what revives us and what will sustain us. At Goshen Theater, we partner with Phoenix, who comes in and does shows with Art House, with people who come in. We have class reunions, galas, all kinds of things. Goshen needs Goshen's theater. And we need a leg up. And we need Goshen to help us keep the arts vibrant and alive. I love this town, and I'll leave you with that.
Thank you, Marcia. Next, we have Grant Sassman, and after that, Andy and Mindy.
It's a hard one to follow up. My name is Grant Sassman. I am the owner-operator of Black Squirrel Golf Club, here to kind of campaign for the Fourth of July, Fourth of July, which is fireworks on the fairway that was put on for the last three years. And I want to thank the city specifically, Mayor Liptee, several of the council members been involved, helping us kind of kick this back off. It was about a fourteen-year stint that it was non-existent, and it's been one of the more memorable things, I think, that Goshen offered for the community that was such of a large size for the Fourth of July. And the ownership that I'm a part of, that Black Squirrel was really excited to, obviously not wanting to be a part of the community again, but really kind of revive something that was so memorable and that was so impactful for the community. So that's kind of what I'm here for, is to say thank you for the help that you've done in the past, the last three years. As you know, next year is going to be two hundred and fifty years celebration of the United States of America. Would love to bring it back again to continue it on for twenty twenty-six. As you know, we are not a non-for-profit, but I will guarantee you that we do not profit off of this event one bit. We actually put a lot of our own money into it because we care a lot about the community. We have a hundred and seventeen acres, and we say, what can we do with it to offer up to the community? This is not something where we're trying to get rich off a golf course. We believe that we have more of an impact and a calling on our lives to further into Goshen. Grew up in Goshen my entire life, been a part of it since pretty much day one. So that's what I'm here for. It's the Fourth of July next year, twenty twenty-six, that we're campaigning for. And I want to say thank you so much for what you've done in the past and moving forward. Love to see if we can continue it.
Thank you. Next, we have Andy and Mindy. And after that, Brad, you're the closer.
All right. Good evening. My name is Andy Murray, board member with First Light Mission. This is Mindy Moorhead, Executive Director of First Light. Appreciate the opportunity to just tell you a few things about the shelter. So those of you that may not be aware, First Light Mission is a homeless shelter at eight ten West Wilkinson that serves exclusively families and single ladies. This year will serve around a hundred guests at the facility. I've been working with Mindy for about three years now, and I've seen dramatic change in that time. The two most notable to me is, one, the level of unmet need would suggest that we need to be serving more like four to five hundred guests to meet the level of need that we're seeing today. And the second being that when I first met Mindy, only around twenty to thirty percent of her guests were employed today. Over ninety percent of the folks seeking shelter are employed, which is a sign of some of the things that are happening in our community, unfortunately. So we do provide wraparound services. So one of the reasons that we choose only to serve a hundred guests is that Mindy and her team go very deep with relationship, which is one of the things that makes us unique, which is part of what allows the transformational change to happen. So in addition to that, we have a clothing closet which is accessed by the schools and by police department and other local organizations. We provide financial counseling, life skills training, employment support, and case management. And that wraparound service has enabled her organization to achieve a ninety-three percent success rate. So ninety-three percent of our guests, when they graduate the facility, remain housing secure in their future, which is unprecedented relative to other shelters. So in addition to this just being the right thing to do for our community, I would also like to highlight the fact that this is a significant cost benefit for the community as well. So depending on what study you believe, there's a lot of them out there, but both statewide and nationwide would suggest that the cost of one homeless person to a community is anywhere from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. So if you stay on the conservative end of that and say it's five thousand dollars, that's five hundred thousand dollars that will save the community this year, just with a hundred guests that we're serving this year. And obviously, that multiplies and compounds over time. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit more about First Light, and thank you very much for your support of the organization.
Thank you.
Bam, and hit it right on the nose. Look at that.
Would you like to add anything?
I just want to say thank you for your time. I know this job is really hard. I appreciate all the support and hope it continues.
And we appreciate you. Thank you, Mindy. Okay, finally, Brad Huntsberger. Last but definitely not least.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah. I mean, I couldn't resist. I'm here actually with two hats on. We'll start with La Casa. I appreciate your support for decades of La Casa's work in the community. We couldn't do without the support of the city. You touched on the opioid funds. We're utilizing those up Lakeview Drive for that supportive housing up there with the support of this body not quite a year ago, year and a half ago. And appreciate that and all the funds that we've gotten from the Edit and whatnot has helped fill in the cracks here and there. So we really appreciate that. I'm also here to support and remind you the impact that Arts in the Mill Race has. We've touched on the arts in the community. A couple of folks have spoken much more eloquently than I will about that. But we've also appreciated the support of Arts in the Mill Race by this body over the years, and we'd appreciate that to continue. There, less than a minute.
Thank you very much, Brad. We appreciate everybody who took time out of their day to come share about their organizations or just advocate on behalf of what's happening with the state legislature tonight. Council, we move back to you for additional discussion. But we asked everybody to sign in, so I want to honor that for those that took that opportunity. So there will be another, a second budget hearing coming up in October the sixth. I want to make sure I get that date right. So there could potentially be another opportunity if someone wanted to come to that meeting as well. Counselors, questions, comments, discussion, or are we prepared to move forward with a vote on first reading?
Thank you all for showing up. It's pretty incredible turnout. And you sat through a very long time where all you were looking at is a blue screen and us. And so I think Marcia hit it on the head. We live in an incredible community, and people love this community. And people love this community and you all showing up is an example of that certainly. So thank you.
So Councilman Littler, I think Mayor said that you kind of like the liaison for the group, the CRC group that meets and hears from them. Is that right? Did I hear that right?
So, so the CRC heard longer presentations from
Yes.
And for many more than these, yes.
Yeah. So I'm just going to speak to the fact that I'm part of me would love to hear that. The other part of me is glad that I don't have to make the decisions on how to divide a finite amount of money. I think it's safe to say that we would love to be able to provide more to those partnerships because of what they do. And like you said, this is just a glimpse of what we have in our community. Those that aren't able to be here, I'm sure are just as worthy. And so I wish we had more money to give to those partnerships because they are what makes Goshen, Goshen. So yeah, I'm glad you're dividing that money up.
It's not easy. There are lots of very compelling organizations who do good work on behalf of our city. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Or make changes or recommendations or?
I was really struck in reviewing the budget. I looked it over a number of times by what's effectively a flat budget from year to year. I mean, I know we had, there are significant changes due to projects. But I just I understand that means doing more with less. And if my calculation is correct, we will be looking at ten and a half fewer staff positions than budgeted for twenty twenty five. Is that right?
I'll have to clarify. I think it's between eight and ten. So.
Okay. That has an impact. That changes what our city staff is able to do. And so I just really want to acknowledge the sacrifices that have gone into this budget. And I know it's not easy. I mean, we've heard that a lot, but I, from the people sitting behind us, me, this side, it's a lot.
Thank you so much, Counselor. And you're absolutely right. I mean, it was so very difficult and painful for our department heads to even contemplate what that could look like for their teams. And ultimately what it means for our community and they were so dedicated and gracious about it. So I appreciate your acknowledgement on their behalf. They worked very hard.
I think we can go to far, go farther and say it's the work you did on the budget, in my opinion, it's not really flat. I think it's quite a bit less than last year. I think, you know, if you really dive into some of those numbers. And so you're right, there are a lot of projects that make it a little confusing and hard, but I would say that you've taken action to try and prepare for the future. And the other thing, it was very startling, which I've seen these numbers before to a certain extent, but the impact of the potential twenty percent cut. Ever which note, that wasn't just an example that one of those cuts could take care of everything.
Right.
It's every one of those departments. And if you just look at this year's numbers, the budget, and you take twenty percent of that, you're, you're looking about fourteen million dollars having to cut out of a budget. And you can say, well, we can trim here, trim there, but trimming fourteen million dollars. I just, you just can't get rid of a department. Even if you did get rid of a department, it's still not going to come close to that kind of a cut. So it would be, it's going to be very daunting moving forward. So yeah, thanks for your work on this.
We did hear some calls from the audience for a meeting to make sure that the people who can change this are aware that there there are people in our community that want it to be changed. And so maybe we can move forward down that road.
I was going to try to make some comments later about that.
Well, I'll defer.
No, that's fine.
Because it, it has to be nonpartisan. It has to be not seen as coming from one or the other political parties that, that there is, as Mayor Lipte said, not much daylight between all our positions when it comes to what we have to face. Certainly in this coming year, we'll feel it, but in the three, three years from now, two years from now, if it doesn't change, we're going to feel in a whole different way. So I'm sorry if I.
No, not at all. I'm glad you did. When I should say it too, so.
Jump in.
Anyone else?
Well, I will say we did invite Counselor Weddell and myself sent a letter inviting Representative King and Senator Doreo to attend tonight. I don't see them here. So.
I did receive a phone call from Senator Doreo before the meeting apologizing. He had other arrangements or other commitments this evening.
Okay.
But he did reach out to me.
Okay. I believe the Representative King is out of town. I believe she is planning to be here on the sixth. Is that correct, Michael? Yep. Anyone else on the council who wishes to speak? Okay. Do we have a motion to, or is there consensus to move forward with the vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed to passage on first reading?
Let me rephrase. Would, is there desire for a roll call vote? With clerk treasurer, please do a roll call vote.
Councilor Gerber?
Yes.
Councilor Ledrock?
Yes.
Councilor Nisley?
Pass.
Councilor Peel?
Yes.
Councilor Reichsacker?
Yes.
Councilor Schrock?
Yes.
Council President Weddell?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll explain that. I'm not comfortable with the budget the way it is right now. And I know we have another meeting to pass or, or to pass this again. And I just want to do a little more looking into it after tonight with a couple of concerns I have. That is my reason for passing.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. And I encourage you to be in communication with any of our department heads. And certainly I would be happy to have any conversations between now and our next meeting on the sixth. So that brings us to our final item on our agenda, which is elected official reports. Is there anybody who, any of the our elected officials who want to give an update or any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of comments. Are you still here? The soon to be eighteen year old? If he, I know, but you will be. And even though you're not a voter, I think you're more informed than the majority of the population about what's going on. So thank you for being so articulate. For those of you that called for a town hall meeting, again, Council Rep Gerber and I sent out a letter to our local state reps, inviting them to these meetings. I've been contacted by numerous people wanting to help organize a town hall, and I'm more than happy to help with that. I don't know how successful that will be. If I had to speculate, I would think that maybe our state legislators would want to wait until maybe they discuss things in the next year. I don't know. So, but I'm willing and happy to work with both Council Rep Gerber, frankly, anyone else on this council. And I'm also happy to work with anyone in the county or any of the other cities to try and arrange some sort of a town hall. And I think someone mentioned that even if our state reps don't show up, you know, we could still have one. I think if we did that, we would just be all preaching to the choir, so to speak. So, but I think the door is open. Whether you reach out to me or Council Rep Gerber or anyone else, we're more than willing to work with anyone to try and make things happen to draw more light on the issue.
Yes, thank you.
I would just like to touch a little bit of what's happened in the past two weeks of the assassination that of Charlie. First thing is nobody, nobody should be murdered for their political or religious stance. Nobody. Second thing is, is one of the biggest reasons I'm even mentioning this is that Goshen has a connection there. Black Squirrel sets on George Hay property. And Matt Hay, which went to school with Don and I, Matt, moved to Arizona, him and his wife Deb. They have a boy by the name of Matt. And Matt Junior, I'll say, works for Charlie. And is very good friends. They, his mom and dad was at the memorial yesterday. Matt, there's still one person that lives in town that is a hay. And so I just want to mention to keep them in your prayers. And it's kind of, it's hard for me, knowing Matt and knowing what they've gone through too, because of this. I just want to reiterate, nobody deserves to be killed, assassinated for their beliefs.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Doug.
Anyone else?
I had, I had a couple of things. So first off, the Men and I Relief Sales this weekend. So don't forget that Friday and Saturday out at the Elkhart County Fairgrounds. And I'm going to expand on what Doug said just a little bit. I, I think back and one of the reasons that I wanted to be on this city council was to make a difference and to help. And I'm very proud to be with this group right here because we, sometimes you forget which party we're with. Because ninety percent of the time we're together and we're doing what's best for the city of Goshen. That includes the mayor, that includes the department heads too. So I am, I am very pleased to work with this group right here and I consider each of you my friend.
Thank you, Counselor. That's worth an applause.
I'll tell you a real quick story about the Hay family. They, they were at, Matt was, him and his wife were walking down the hallway at the, at their office, the big office, Charlie's. And Charlie was walking towards him and he walked up to him and Charlie introduced himself and he said, what's your name? And he said, my name's Matt Hay. And he said, he kind of got a funny look on his face and kind of thought, what? He goes, well, I've got a guy that works for me that's named Matt Hay. And he said, that's my son. And that's where their connection got to, got to be started for them.
Thank you.
I just have one thing to add. I noticed that one of the student youth advisors, Ezra Tice, deserves congratulations. He's the youth advisor to the B Z A. He is a national merit semifinalist.
That is wonderful.
The other thing we need to mention is Travis Peak being fire instructor of the year.
Well, you're stealing my thunder here.
Oh, sorry.
Chief, did you want to speak to that?
I want to do, say something really quickly. As a person who takes minutes, last year at this equivalent meeting, there were no public comments. And I think it's credit to the community that we have, that people have responded to information that's been provided about what's going on with the city's budget. And I just want to express my gratitude for all of the people who turned out tonight. And people who I believe will be here for the next budget meeting for their involvement and their participation.
I'm putting you on the spot. It's actually elected official. So I'll jump in.
You do it.
Okay.
Be happy to. So I had the opportunity to make some nominations for some state awards for some fire department personnel. So Travis Peak was selected as the instructor of the year, instructor of the year for the state of Indiana from the Chiefs Association. And Charles Stevens was selected as the Public Safety Educator of the Year. He was able to have influence on fourteen thousand people last year. We also had
Andrew.
Andrew Preem was the Specialty Care Award for the state for the year for mobile integrated health. And then Paramedic of the Year was Mike Hamby for his save that we recognized, cardiac save that we recognized here. Then Mayor Lipte was also selected as the elected official of the year for the State Fire Chiefs Association.
Just by association?
Goshen was very well represented. I think it speaks volume of just what an exceptional team we have that they received so many accolades at that award ceremony. And I felt so very proud to be a part of that and truly honored to be able to contribute in meaningful ways to public health and safety. And I'll just echo what you said, Counselor, about being able to work across party lines and for the greater good. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to work with this group and with all of these department heads for such an important cause. So thank you all. Counselor Nisley, you are up.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All is in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.